Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 at 7:05 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Brian Speckzielski, 56 Bigelow Road, and the date of the application was May 4th, 2022. The following was posted in the Town Hall and also was in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Brian Speckzielski requested a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for setback relief under dimensional regulations Appendix B to build a house in an IRA zone district. The property is located at 56th Bigelow Road, MAP 111, Parcel 11. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." Hearing tonight's case will be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Bombara, and myself. And we have notification from the Community Development Office that the proper parties have been notified by certified mail of tonight's meeting. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to join us?
Okay.
If you want to give us the rundown of what you're hoping to do.
Well, for those, there's a few of my neighbors in the audience that I forwarded the plans to because I don't know if they've had a chance to see the plans or if they got that in the mail or not. I'm not sure.
We do have them.
We pretty much, the house that's there is a 1940s house. It has no insulation. The wires are pretty bad. And so, of course, my wife wanted me to begin fixing it. So I watched my other neighbor fix his house for a year and go through massive aggravation with an older house and kind of watched what he did and decided that I didn't want to do that. So we have four kids. The house is 700 square feet currently. It cannot, you can't stay in there in the wintertime. The windows are old. I mean, it's nice. It's just kind of out, we've outgrown it, so we're looking to get bigger and then a little more safer so that we can have some maybe year-round use and also some wiring issues and things that we've had along the way. So anyways, we decided that we wanted to do that. We found out that setback requirements for our side neighbors has changed since the house was built in 1940. I guess it was 20 feet then, and it's 23 feet now. So that puts us into the ZBA since we are now in noncompliance. So we thought a good solution would be to leave the same width, which is what we're doing. We're not going to infringe on our neighbors any further, go any closer to our boundaries, and move the front, so add to the house by moving towards the roadside, which would, we don't have technically anyone across the streets. We wouldn't inhibit any of their views. We'd be moving further away from the water. We'd keep our front boundary the same, our side boundaries the same. We would just add on to the footprint by moving, I don't know the direction, but we'd be moving towards Bigelow Road. And then the other thing that we found out was that our septic system is old. So while we were doing all this, the engineer decided it would be best if we scrapped the old septic system, which is actually close to the water. So based on the elevations, it's most likely going into the lake. So we would be swapping the septic up towards the driveway where our cars currently sit. We did have it perped out. And we drill a well because right currently we draw water out of the lake, which was kind of confusing when I went to have the house inspected and got a call from Tustin, even though I bleached the well we had in front, didn't seem to solve the problem until I figured out that that was the handwell that was for the outhouse. So there's a handwell inside. We'd be getting rid of that well. I bleached about, you know, three or four gallons and still couldn't snow it in, so I couldn't figure it out. So we'd be drilling well. We've checked with the Department of Health on that as far as Mr. and Mrs. Smith who are here, their septic system. So that's all been designed and gone through. So we'd be drilling well towards the waterside. Septic would be on the roadside. So that would clean up our septic, and we wouldn't have to worry about somewhere down the road having to fix that because it would be a disaster after we were to build a house or any distance or anything. Plus, it's real close to the boundary of the house itself. So take a few trees out. Again, talk conservation after this board. If you guys agree to it, then we'd be heading to conservation for that. But it would solve a few problems, give us more space, fix a septic problem, get us some water that we could drink. It wouldn't solve my tax assessment problem, but...
That'll never happen.
It's kind of helpful. So, you know, that's what we're looking to do. I guess that's about it.
Okay. Are there any board members that have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, in the beginning, in your statements regarding your application, you wanted to slide the house over a foot.
No, I think, well, that was the engineer that did that. Apparently, the house sits kind of, I don't know, at an angle.
Yep.
Skewed it so that...
So you want to make it more conforming on both sides?
Not me. They did. But yeah, more conforming. I think one side is 21 feet, one's 19, so they would skew it so that...
Because you went from 22.7 to 23.2 on one side. Then, of course, you got 21 on one side, the old, and you got 22. What I mean, it just seems like you're going to turn it sideways a little bit.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
I think it's just a semantic thing.
And you're going to pull it back. But the, you're actually framing off, if you looked at the schematics here that you got here in print, you're going to square the whole house off because this is already up into the zoning area. So you're going to take in, you're going to leave that shit, I'm sorry, that deck that's there or that's going to come down and rebuild?
The deck is up to conservation.
Okay.
Because that's within the 50 feet. So that's to be determined. But the front of the house, wherever that, the distance from the front of the house to the water will not change, at least, well, maybe a few, you know, skewed.
Yeah.
But that's my understanding, that we won't be getting any closer to the water.
Yeah. So you're going to conservation after this meeting?
That was the schedule of how I thought. So we're told things should work, so we come here first. So we've been aboard of health, and then I guess it would be conservation after. And then to the building official, which I've met with.
Is the septic design approved?
As far as I know, yes. Yes, they perked it. Ironically, I was telling Don, my neighbor, that my other neighbor, Dave, after, they both built the house in 1940, both had old septic systems, and we perked on the same day. So I think he's going to be redoing his septic system. So the board, the gentleman came out, saw a scientist, and he did both deep holes and perks on the same day.
Oh, sweet. Okay.
Kind of ironic, so.
I don't know if anyone else went up there. I went up and looked at them. Yeah, I think your wife was there.
Yes, she did tell me.
Your children.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's a nice piece of property. It's pretty much flat. Have you, do you think you're going to run into any ledges there because that's known for that particular, a little further?
Uh, no. Let's hope not, but...
Yeah. I don't have any objections for what he is proposing because he's pulling the house away from the lake and lodging it, but not, you know.
Not in width, yeah.
There was some issue about gutters. So I was dealing with the architect too, where they were going to recess gutters or something so that we kept the exact same width. We wouldn't...
Yeah. Yeah, because it goes from the gutters.
Right, right, right. Mike?
Mike? You first started. You said you had four kids?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see two bedrooms. I'm just curious.
Well, one of my daughters is 23, so, and then, so the two girls. I have a 23-year-old, and I have a bunch of young kids.
Yeah. No, I just...
So it's listed as...
Six people, two bedrooms.
Hopefully, hopefully two some days.
Well, if you only build two bedrooms, it'll probably be only two.
I always tell people, don't build a guest bedroom if you don't want guests.
Is it a two-bedroom design?
Yes.
Is it a two-bedroom design?
Yes. Two bedrooms on the top floor.
So you got a walkout?
No, I mean the septic.
Oh, I don't know what the septic is. The septic is a three-bedroom.
Three-bedroom design?
It has an office on the third floor that could potentially be a...
Anybody else have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Good.
Jim?
No.
All right. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this application in the room? Sir, you just need to tell us your name and address, and then you're free to say whatever you'd like.
Richard Marilyn Fuller, 84 Bigelow Road. No, I just, I think it's an improvement. He's been a great neighbor. He keeps his place very clean and orderly. It's a credit to our neighborhood. I'm happy he's doing it.
Okay. We'll make a note of that. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a question. You think that you would reconsider or consider doing anything with the overhangs in your house?
Overhangs, I'm sorry.
Well, there's no overhangs on the house at all. So all you want, you have tapered, tapered insulation on your roof. Everything's going to shed right down the side of your house.
It's my understanding now, I haven't looked at that close enough, but the architect told me he's building the gutters into the roof line.
Okay. I'm just trying to help you. That's why I'm asking that question. So you don't have a maintenance problem later on.
I think he said, and I haven't looked at it again close enough, but the first floor, he was inset a foot because he needed it for the stairwell, or it was, the foundation was going in a foot, and that's where he was going to get his gutters from. So he is aware of that he can't go any closer to the neighbors. So whatever design, either in the roof itself, or he's saying he's going to have to kick the whole foundation in the six inches or eight inches for the gutters at four inches. But he's certainly aware of that, and I think we've kind of dealt with it.
Billing inspector, you're watching it too.
Yeah.
It would be a...
Your final plan would have to dictate that.
Yeah.
You haven't talked to conservation at all?
I have not. I mean, really, the issue on the conservation, I think, is, we kind of talked about it a little bit, was deck where decks, because of the, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of silting barriers.
And the reason why I ask you that is if we found in favor of this and we said, yeah, go ahead and do it, you're restricted to that. So if the conservation turns around, we need you to move back another couple feet or whatever. Now you have a problem.
I see.
So that's something that you may want to be concerned about.
And we did have a correspondence from Steve Ziss from Conservation said, he said, "I commented on the billing permit a few weeks ago that they will need to get Conservation Commission approval." Steve Ziss.
I understand your point, though. You'd be approving this particular, and if it changed...
Yeah, it just put you in a tough spot because...
That did happen a few years ago.
It has an existing, it has an existing decade as it is. I think that's probably at least 10 feet in coming up from the house, is it not?
It is. I saw the circle on the map. It's within the 50 feet. So, I mean, again...
I wouldn't want to guess what another fourth or commission would...
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's 12 foot.
So I think the only issue that I see, that I saw on this would be was the grade on that found on the bottom floor and some retaining walls, and then what we would do with the water. So I think that's kind of what the conservation would be. So whatever runoff we have coming off that hill, so right now runs down the sides and just heads into the lake. But if we had some retaining walls with stairs, where would that water go? So I am thinking they're going to want some solutions or something.
Well, I think what Mike was getting at is that several years ago, we had waterfront lot, and people proposed a house like you're proposing, and we approved the variance. They went to conservation, and Conservation wanted to move the house like four feet further away from the water than it was. So...
Was it, was it an existing or a new?
It was new.
Yeah.
It was existing, and then they were...
They were doing the...
Building new. And they had to come back, and they had to refile and incur all those fees. If you want to speak to Conservation and come back and continue this, you could do that. Or if you want to move forward and see what happens, that's your choice.
Well, you guys know about this more than I do. Would you recommend that we continue it?
Well, that only happened once. And that was several years ago, but...
The board has changed since then.
So worst-case scenario would be if the sentiment is correct, they say they need to move it, that I come back here with a different plan, with a different parameters that based on the plan. So it kind of starts to process over again. That's kind of what happens. Yeah.
You'd have to start all over again.
Well, if, maybe, if he stayed with them, because all he's looking for are variance for the side setbacks.
Yes.
He's good on the front and the rear. So if he moved a little bit here or there, he's going to be...
I just want him to be aware of...
Yep. No, no, I just...
Potential.
We just had, yeah, we just had one in the reservoir, if you remember.
I remember well.
Not that I want to bring this to your attention, but I don't think I meet the front either, so I, we talked about, to the road.
The distance off the street?
Yeah. I think it was 100 feet and 176 or something.
No, that's, you're with it a lot.
That's with it.
Your setback was fine. It was a width at a lot.
Fifty, okay.
You're 63 feet, and you only need, so you had plenty of setback on the front.
Yep.
It was the widthy a lot. The road frontage was...
So I think in understanding that, I'll, we'll proceed with the vote today. And then if they were to change it, the worst they would change it would be off the lake, which we have 13 feet or so to work with. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're only giving them a variance on the side setback, so as long as they don't encroach any further.
Yep.
You're on your own.
Yep. Okay. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak on this application? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hi, Dan Heaney.
Hi, John Bombara.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Jim Palmer, aye.
Okay. All right. So, does the board want to make a decision this evening?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance for 56th Bigelow Road, docket number 2022-03.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hi, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay. We will get the decision drafted and get it to you as soon as we can, and then you'll have an appeal period.
Okay.
And good luck with your project.
What day are you guys coming out to hope?
What?
On October 3rd, 14th.
Send us the schedule.
So now, can I go to Conservation in the interim, or should I wait for my PO period, or how does that work?
No, you can go to the...
I would start that process.
Like tomorrow?
Benefit of that, then we'll follow it.
Tomorrow would be a good idea.
So the decision will be typed up. We sign it, and then it gets stamped on with the town quirk, then it's 20 days from that point.
Yeah.
If you do anything in the interim, you're going on your own.
Right. And if you just tell them that it was approved based on your submittal, then they should have enough to work with to...
Okay.
Move that part forward.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
See you soon.
And I'm going to help.
Mr. Fuller, how you doing?
Good to be here.
Good to you.
Good to be here.
No way.
He's an excellent job, by the way.
Thanks. It's all because of these guys.
You're having them watch it.
It's the company he keeps. So they're here. These guys are watching you.
Okay.
Nice guy.
Yeah, let's see.
7:15, all right.
Yep. Great. The next public hearing is, public hearing for Adam Martin, case number 2022-04, 0 Northwest Main Street. The date of the application is May 4th. The following was posted in the Town Hall and also was in the Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022 in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. Adam Martin is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for frontage relief under dimensional regulations Appendix B to build a house in an IRA zone district. The property is located at 0 Northwest Main Street, MAP 110, Parcel 34. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." I have confirmation from our staff that all parties that needed to be notified by certified mail, that was completed. And before we open a public hearing, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Bombara, Mr. Palmer, and myself will be voting, hearing and voting on this case. And the public hearing is now open. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to join us?
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I didn't think of it on the last case. We just want to make them aware that you need to all fall votes.
Yes, right. That's, you need, we have a member missing tonight.
Out of courtesy, want to make sure you know.
I have a bigger version of the plan.
It's okay. Yeah. If you would like to make your presentation, the floor is yours.
I'm just looking to build a single-family house. We got the septic design from the seller. I would actually like to move the house further back without changing the septic design itself.
The only, the variance that we're seeking is the frontage.
Okay, just, who are you, sir?
Douglas Martin.
My brother.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We have a minute taken, but she's not here, so I just want to...
He's the brains of the operation.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it. Seeking the variance for the frontage, a single-family house dwelling, septic design. So we're in the process of purchasing the property, so we're going ahead and just getting all this in mind ahead of time.
All right. I did have a question. How are you calculating the frontage based on this plan?
It was based on the property line that was provided.
So basically, you're saying that your frontage goes from one side of the street to the other?
Yeah, the way the lot is divided, yeah, it's pretty much along the road there.
I haven't seen this before.
Well, that was the problem I had with looking at this plan. I mean, the frontage, I'm considering the frontage, the frontage of the lot that's on the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Not this entire frontage because you're not on the right-of-way here, but you cross the right-of-way up here, but that's really not the frontage.
Okay.
So it actually starts right here where the question is?
It's 79, according to the, the...
Map.
What, 79 point something?
That's this piece from here to here?
I believe, yeah. Yeah, so I, maybe I misspoke then. It should have been that 79, that piece.
So your property goes right across the street?
Yes.
But your property lines, we're looking at this, this area here, am I correct?
That, this little triangle is not considered a property.
So the triangle is not considered?
No.
On the left over there.
Yeah, on that left.
From this side.
Yeah.
No, yeah, that's Cahill.
Right here?
No, that little one, that's Cahill.
Yeah, that's Cahill.
And this down here.
Yeah. Is Leystone approved an accepted road?
Don't believe this.
Huh?
Okay.
I think that's what saved them on this lot, was because it wasn't accepted road. So it gave them road frontage because prior to that, it was a landlot. So the right-hand side went through it. So that's why it's a little screwy the way it is.
All right, I'm still confused where the 75 feet of frontage is.
So I guess we're considering the frontage, then the piece that goes across the road, is that correct?
So it'd go from, say, the right-hand side of the driveway?
Yes.
To across the road?
To across the road. So that's, that's the piece that's closest to top, closest.
So the board knows this is what I was having a problem with when he first came in with the petition to have it as frontage lot. And I mean, determine, my definition of frontage would be what's on the road, not what's crossing the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the, well, the frontage on the existing right-of-way.
Right.
More than...
This frontage right here.
Yes, right.
Not this line here.
Right.
This wouldn't count because that property is not part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd only be from there to there. But from here to here is, is this the 79 or is this the 79? Which one's 79? Because you don't have either one marked.
I believe this is the 79. Yeah, I don't have the...
The longer one?
Yeah, the one that goes across the road.
I haven't seen this before.
It's a, it's an interesting...
They should have probably went to planning board before.
Well, I don't, I don't know about that, but I think we could, maybe we should get some input from Town Council?
Well, I did refer to Town Council, and they really had no, no answer to it, whether it was across the road or ran with the road. The attorney for the seller?
Yes, yeah.
American Opelone, that's where this comes from.
Yeah, I did see that.
You know, given the description that it was in the family all the years and hadn't changed and all that, but it still didn't give me a definition as to what the frontage is. So I haven't been able to get that definition as to where is the actual frontage. I don't know how you could have frontage across the road because if that was the case, then you could say, oh, I'm going to pull my driveway at that.
Yes, no, you're right. It, it's an interesting lot because, I mean, if you're taking that definition, then really only the frontage is...
So what's the length of the...
Like the length of the driveway. Like the length of the driveway.
Do we have any numbers on that length right there?
I believe that's the 79 that they were...
The one that goes along the road?
Yes, I believe that was...
Is this the 79?
Yes.
And this is something other than that?
Oh, no, he was talking, this, this part, this part, yeah, I don't...
I mean, they look almost the same length.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
There he goes. We need to go get a measuring stick.
Is it truly to scale or?
According to the scale.
Would you like me to go get my scale?
Uh, what's that?
Would you like me to go get my scale?
You can go get one and rescale this one if you want.
I can go to my own scale.
I was guessing they're gonna, they're gonna call.
That's the frontage, because that's, that's a little, a little over three inches. This is four inches, so they must be calling this, because it's 20 feet frontage.
Yep.
And measured about seven, seven eighths, and it's scaled a little off.
Which is the longer one, the right-of-way or the one going across?
Here's the short, yellow is 250.
Which was the short one?
The right-of-way one.
This one.
That's the long one?
I think it's what they call it.
Yeah, this is the short one, yeah. I mean, I read through what the council does, and I don't disagree that...
Yeah.
It was in...
Prior to, previous to all.
Right, I just...
Yeah, they, I mean, they should have showed the scale, marked it out on the...
I guess. And the fact that it's crossing the road, I, I...
I'm a little confused as to how, how we get, how we can get an approved road that goes through the corner of the property without taking that piece of the property.
I think all the, I'm going to misspeak, but I think a lot of those properties through there, that, that road goes through all those properties.
Yeah, I live on a road, the same thing everybody owns, out of the road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, um...
Because there are houses across the street.
Those houses that pass into, right?
Right, yeah. And if I eventually, if I looked at the, the town's GIS, I think the, the road goes right through those properties as well.
Let me check with the town clerk about what was accepted, she said it was.
Okay.
Well, the fact that it's five inches, it's a case, it's...
Yeah.
This isn't a lot.
I don't know, I'm feeling that we maybe we need town council to help us out on this one, but...
Well, if you feel that way.
I know Ken reached out to him, but he got what you usually get from an attorney, a lot of talk and no answer.
I don't make a lot, I'm pretty, I'm sure it's the one that's out in the street, because the, the other property line that goes along that street is a full inch longer. There's no way that it's, about seven eighths is...
This one here. The next one.
Yeah, that one.
The top one?
No, the bottom one, the one that's on the edge of the right-of-way.
Oh, edge of, which says existing ROW?
This is about three inches, and this is about four inches.
Yeah.
So, seven eighths, this is measured about seven eighths, so it's not off like, so...
Four, seven, twenty?
This right here is the frontage, that they call the...
Yeah.
If it was an approved street.
So, I, I just, I just did it out, it's that right-of-way line, so from the driveway corner to the existing property line is what they measured as the, the 79 point.
The, the right-of-way line?
This line.
That's the 79 piece?
Seventy-nine point something feet.
Very unique situation.
It certainly is.
He's got plenty of area.
Yeah, plenty of area, just, it's just, you know, existing property, kind of how it was divided.
I, I, but I think he would qualify for a reduced frontage lot exemption.
I would think he would, he only needs the 40 feet of frontage, and he's got 79 points.
The only thing is, you, you have to build your house 200 feet back from the road, but, but planning board might be able to waive that.
I think we're there anywhere. Hey, I think the current house they got on there is a couple hundred feet back anyways. And I'd like to push mine even more further.
Is the house already on it?
No, no, the one that's on the drawing.
The one that's been shown here, yeah.
It's just required you gotta be 200 feet back before you can build, it's gotta be the full width, 200 feet of frontage before you can build.
Oh, okay.
100 reduced frontage lot.
100 reduced frontage lot, yeah, yeah.
If that, if that is what he's saying, as the frontage, it's not called out that way on the plan.
No, it's not.
It's showing, it's showing the corner of the lot on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
Would, the actual lot does go through the, the road?
Then, then, then you're existing, then you're going back to what I said, that that's even less than what?
So, I guess that's, that's the question, right? What are we considering the frontage? Is it the, the right-of-way piece?
Got to need clarity on, on what that actual frontage is.
Right. And I don't, seems to me you have everything in place for a reduced, reduced frontage lot.
Well, I don't know why they're going to go through planning board, because it's 40 feet, you would go through that, but you're going to have the same problem, it's got to go through, it's got to be identified as to what the actual frontage is.
Right.
Yeah, so...
The road cutting through the lot doesn't make that the road frontage, unless you lost that little triangle, which is not going to hurt the lot, but...
No, it's not going to hurt the lot, well, I guess, I guess that's...
It's going to be shown there, if that's somewhere along the line, the deed must be shown for them to put it on there.
Yeah, the, the deed that is available for this lot shows, shows it how it's drawn out here.
Mm-hmm.
So, then, at some point, I guess the towns took accept, you know, accepted the road, right?
If the road accepted.
Can they accept the road with it going through other properties? I don't know.
Did you check that with the town clerk, as an accepted road, or is it...
Yeah, I did, yeah. He said it was an accepted road.
I mean, you have a council involved, I would, I would recommend maybe you get a continuance here and see if, if they could look into the lot frontage exemption, that's, that's through the planning board, not the ZBA.
Okay.
But if you have the minimum, minimum requirements, it's basically automatic.
Okay. And, and so you wouldn't need to come for this?
You kind of have to come back here.
Come back here.
Yeah.
You're going to need clarity on that frontage.
Yeah, and hopefully, your council can give you...
You're getting things there, it doesn't make sense.
So, I, I think the clarity then that we need then is, because we, we know that the, the property lines are the way that they were shown here, so I assumed that when the town took acceptance of the road, then there is either an easement maybe, or could there be, there'd probably be an easement through all those properties that it passes through.
Yeah.
Right?
The, the town would have been, been, not been able to take it over.
Yeah, without an easement, right?
Without, yeah, without it being...
And I, I didn't see any record of that when you searched this property, so...
You know, my opinion would be to go back to your, your land planner over there and define whether this is, this is the property coming across the street, or is it this one down over here? And then, probably go to the, I would think, Mr. Chairman, go to the planning board and see if we can get that lot for 40 feet, and you'll have...
If this, if this is the 40 feet?
Yeah.
All right.
Then you got enough.
Then you got enough, and as long as you're 200 feet back with the dwelling.
And you need double the area, what you have.
Is it the, is it the dwelling that needs to be 40, 200 feet back?
Yes.
So, the septic can be put where it's shown?
Oh, septic can be right where it is.
Got you. It's just the dwelling.
I, I think you're way further than 200 feet.
Yeah, I think, I think the way it's shown even right now is fine, though.
It's going along driveway.
Yeah. That's really...
This is the original problem with this drawing, it came into me, looking at the, where's the frontage on the lot, where's determined the frontage on the lot?
Got you. So, I guess are we all in agreement then, that the frontage would be from the dri, like the existing right-of-way line?
No, we're not in agreement at all, we don't know where it is.
Yeah, you need to go back to these people.
You'd need to identify.
Okay.
Identify where the actual frontage is. We don't want to agree to that.
Yeah, all right, all right. Sorry.
No.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll go back to land planning and have...
I would probably get in touch with planning board right away.
Yeah, well, I would talk to your, talk to your council, talk to your engineer.
Yeah.
They certainly have to identify where your frontage is, so that whichever board you go in front of...
Yeah.
You know, if, if it has a stamp on it and the engineer is calling whichever line the frontage, then...
Got you.
I guess that's more than, more qualifications than we have.
If it does come before us again, I would like to see something that shows us that that road was accepted, that there's got to be something that identifies these properties going across like that.
Yeah, that should be, you can get that from the town clerk.
From the town clerk?
Yeah, if you could just get it in writing, that would be great.
Yeah, that'd be good, I'll give her, give them a call.
Yeah, and, and I don't know, I think your engineer can identify where the frontage is, and it should be identified on the plan, so we all, nobody's guessing.
Yeah. So, what they're saying is, we'll go back to land planning, have them identify the frontage. If we have at least 40 feet, whatever that frontage is...
This is only a septic plan, this isn't a site plan, you don't identify anything.
We can go towards, what is that?
Planning board.
The planning board?
Reduced lot frontage exemption, but that's through the planning board. And your council and your engineer should be able to confirm that you have what's required. It appears that you do, but, but again, I don't know where the frontage is, so...
Yeah, yeah.
In any event, I think either one of these exceeds the required 40 feet, so...
Yeah.
And you need twice the area, which the minimum's 90,000 here, so you've got more than twice, and it has to be 200 feet back from the road.
Okay.
So, I...
So, at this time, we probably just continue this, just...
I think that would be the best bet, in case you decide...
In case we need to, yeah.
The, the variance is what you're looking for.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we do continue, I'd like to see a certified plot plan versus a septic plan. We should add that with the application.
Well, this has a stamp on it.
It would identify the frontage issue that we have, if it was.
Yeah, if you do come back, just have the engineer identify the, the frontage, so that we know when it is stamped, so we're, I think we're covered in that respect. We're covered. So, our, our next meeting is July 6th, so, so if you, you want a continuance to that point, and if you don't need to come back, then you can just cancel it if you do.
Yeah.
So, I guess we need a motion to grant them a continuance till July 6th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Bombara.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer to continue this hearing until July 6th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, good luck with that.
Thank you.
You want this?
No.
Are we going to do all in favor?
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to grant the continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dan Heaney?
Palmer, aye.
Patrick, aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay. Ma'am?
I have a quick question. If that does go to the planning board, do the abiding properties get notified again to come and speak?
I believe so, but you might want to check with Community Development to confirm that. I, I believe so, but I, I don't want you to not be notified.
Right.
So, if you check with them, they'll, they'll get you the right answer.
Great, thank you.
Okay, sir?
Is this, is the floor open for comments or concerns on this?
No, it's continued, you're welcome to come to our meeting next month, but we, we just continued it because we, they had issues that we couldn't address, so, but they're rescheduled for the 6th, if you want to come back, you'll certainly be heard.
We're trying to get past the technical point now that's before we...
Less than 60, I measured it today.
Okay. Okay, well, come with...
That loss of eight tools.
All right, we, we were going to have a meeting on the 22nd of this month.
Yes.
So, just want to make sure we have a quorum.
I'm available.
That work for you, John?
I'm not sure, but I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm leaving on the 27th and 28th, so I should be around.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we were just asking...
Seven.
Developer North Brown to come in and bring us up to speed on, on...
Seven o'clock again.
Seven o'clock, yep. So, should be...
Confirmed with them today, with regards to that date.
Okay. And I don't have any, don't think we have any other, no other agenda items, and I guess...
Just a comment on, on this list that we have for North Brown for that meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible that we can get the phases, just another column added, so we know what phase one, phase two, because you got unit one, but it's number two, you got unit 19, which is number four here, it's kind of confusing to follow, this is the whole list.
Yeah.
So, so we could know what, phase one, phase two, phase three.
Is that something we could have Jackie or Jen take here?
I told him today that I needed a full listing of all of his, all of his book and page numbers for the affordables, I need a full listing of all units sold, I need a listing of all units that are on PNS.
Mm-hmm.
I want to know where the, where the status is on phase one, phase two for completion on units, road work, drainage, this is basically the entire development, I want to know where you're at, would you bring it in as a report?
Okay.
But on the list, identify the different phases, if you could, please.
All right.
I will reiterate that.
Yeah.
No, it's just, it gets confusing to look at, so, and if we could get that little color-coded map that I requested, go into our folder, please.
And you got a mini color code, too?
The one that I made while we were there.
Yeah. For whatever reason, it wasn't on the agenda, but I didn't see it.
Nobody has any amendments, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6th, 2022, as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the minutes of April 6th, as written, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved as written. Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye, John Omar.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Okay. I don't think we have any other agenda items.
Let's save this, because it was, it's on our discussion topics for North Brown. Just a note on, on these minutes here, under discussion, number six, Ken Frazier updated that he spoke to Neil or Vicki on Tuesday and requested a full schedule on the proposed finishing up of phase one and two, and as soon as he receives the schedule, he will distribute it to the board. Just a note, that's, two months ago, we asked for this, and he had that reminded him again today, so, on the, the schedule on finishing this up.
Okay, so, we're going to have a meeting dedicated to that?
I don't want to go back to where we were two or three years ago.
All right, well...
That was addressed, like I just said, I addressed that, and he's going to have that at the June 22nd meeting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Heaney?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM.